Good morning, everyone. I'm so happy to see everybody. It's just so nice to get together again and start the church year. So this morning, we are celebrating our usual September return to services. There's going to be a water communion, and we'll also install our new Board of Trustees. If you forgot your water, don't worry, we have water. All right, we will have our prelude. That's a hard act to follow. I'm going to ring our chime, and today I want you to notice that it's an apple, which seems really appropriate for this time of year with all the apple harvests. So welcome to Westwood this morning. We're so glad to be gathered together with you. Westwood is a compassionate community of free religious thought. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm doing Mitch's part. I have first to do-- this is your part. I'm doing the land acknowledgement first. You know, we start every service with this deliberate act of land acknowledgement. And that means every time, we have a fresh opportunity to think about where we are and what that means. One of the things I've often thought about is how strange it is that our concept of land is a concept that it's something you can own and divide up and buy and sell. I mean, we don't own the clouds, we don't own the rain or the sun. Why would we think that we can own the land? But that's just a concept in Western cultures that we have grown up with. And it's not what indigenous peoples believed. They believed that the earth was something that stays. We come and go, and it's permanent, and we need to share it and take care of it and be respectful of it. I think we have a lot to learn about that concept. So let us join together today as we celebrate our September in gathering and remember that we all have obligations under Treaty Six. And we are all obligated to take steps towards reconciliation. And I think our speaker series is one little step towards that. So now Mitch.
All right. Let's do this. All right. Welcome to Westwood Unitarian this morning. We are so glad to gather together with you here this morning. Westwood, as Lorian mentioned, is a compassionate community of free religious thought, inviting all people to rest, grow, and serve the world. This morning's service is one of tradition and ritual. We call it in-gathering because many Wisps-woodians take a break over the summer, and this is the service that marks the beginning of a new season or a new year. We will install our new Board of Trustees and join together for the water communion ritual. And of course, we will sing. Welcome once again to Westwood.
Hello. My name is Brenda. This morning, as always, our service is a collaborative effort. Your service leaders are the incoming Board of Trustees. You'll meet us all formally in the board installation pretty soon. Carl Ulrich will lead us through this ritual. Our musician today is board member and treasurer Jacqueline Willett. Tech hosting is being provided by Hannah, with backup from Carl Ulrich and Bill Lee. For people on Zoom, if you have a chalice or candle nearby and wish to light it for your service, now is the time. "Kindling the Flame." These are the words from Louise E. Van Leeuwen. "We light our chalice, not because we must, but because we may. We light our chalice, not because we have the truth, but because we each come bearing, seeking many truths. We light our chalice in connection across culture, distance, class, and language. We light our chalice that our religion may be a beacon of light, of hope, and justice. We light our chalice to candle our hearts and our minds." Now, we will sing the song "Here We Have Gathered." The lyrics are on the screen.
We now invite Carl Ulrich forward to begin the board installation.
Good morning again. I'm Carl Ulrich, a member here at Westwood. I'm honored to be called upon to lead the installation of our Board of Trustees. Today, we mark a transition in the life of our community from last year's Board of Trustees to this year's. Members who accept a position on our Board of Trustees care deeply about Westwood and are able at this time in their lives to contribute significant amounts of time, effort, and effort to help our community to live up to our purpose. This is our Board of Trustees for 2004 and 2005. Please rise as I call your name and then remain standing. Lorian Kennedy. Jacqueline Willett. Brenda Niska Arrow. Rebecca Patterson is away with her husband. They're celebrating their 30th wedding anniversary in Toronto today, this weekend. Pamela Mungy. And Mitch Walden. And... And Margaret. Sorry, Margaret. Missed but not forgotten, yeah. In a free religious community, service is an expression of our commitment and love. And to be asked to lead is the highest honor. This morning, we, the members of Westwood that you have chosen to lead you in the coming year, stand before you. The relationship between a congregation and board is one of the deep respect and mutual regard. You have asked them to take on the sacred work of discernment and guidance. They need you to support them in their work, share ideas and concerns in love, and to offer them trust that they fulfill their office faithfully. The work of our community is the work of its people. It is the work of building the world in which we dream. It may require time spent poring over budget sheets and hours spent in meetings where small details are hashed out. It may manifest in shared laughter or outright frustration from time to time. But always, it is sacred, for it is the pursuit of beloved community. Service is an act of faith. Service done faithfully in love is the work of justice and community building. This is what you have asked of these people before you this morning, that they serve you faithfully and well. To do this, they need your trust and support. If you are a member of Westwood congregation, would you please rise? I ask now that the members of Westwood, will you offer love and trust to your board? Do we? Yes. We don't have a screen for that. Sorry. Will you offer love and support and trust to your board, responding when they seek your input, showing up when they tell you that work needs to be shared, and listening carefully when they speak of the life of the community? If so, please respond, "we will." You may sit down now. And turning to the board here. You have been elected by the members of the Westwood Unitarian Society at our annual meeting held back in May. Do you freely arrive before us today willing to commit yourselves to these roles of honor and accountability?
Yes.
Will you be diligent and faithful in your work, bringing your best selves, practicing self-care, and keeping an open-heartedness, tending with love to the details of the work, and always keeping the goal of beloved community in front of you as you serve? If so, please respond, "we will."
We will.
Okay. In Unitarian Universalist congregations, the authority to elect our leaders belongs to the membership. So if you are a member of the congregation, you are invited to join in reading the Act of Installation displayed on the screen. Here we go. And we'll read this together. "We call on you to care for this church community. I pledge to you our support. We install you as our leaders and give you the power to make decisions on behalf of this community. Yes, that you teach your wisdom, your abilities, and your understanding of religious principles to guide your decision-making. We also remind you to keep us informed, talk with us, and to call on us as you see fit. Thank you for undertaking this work for our community." Now, the members of the Board of Trustees will give Westwood their pledge. And we'll read together.
With gratitude and a sense of responsibility, we accept the faith that you have placed in us and pledge to carry out our duties to the best of our abilities. We shall honor the traditions which have made this place strong while remaining open to innovations and opportunities.
Good. May the spirit of love guide you in the coming year. May a spirit of joy infuse the work in which you engage, and may your service bless the world. Amen, and may it be so. You may sit down. Lorian.
It's a privilege as president of Westwood's Board of Trustees to honor those who have served so well in the past year and to acknowledge the transfer of responsibility and power to those of us who will carry on. So we'll take a moment to give thanks to the two members who are leaving the board, Maggie Davidson and Carl Ulrich, for the care and hard work they have offered to this community. And I'll tell you, they are still offered. Maggie has just moved into her new house and can't be with us today. But Carl is here. So we appreciate your efforts, Carl and Maggie, too, for the decisions you've made and the wisdom you have shown on behalf of all of us. And because of your hard work and generosity, Westwood has continued to be a strong and vital community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Maggie and I wish you, Westwood's new board, well as you pick up the torch of responsibility and the task of guiding this community of UU's through the next year. To you, we entrust the results of our time and energy these past years and leave you with our support and good intentions. The job is now yours to do, but we will help you as we can when the need arises. And so the torch has been passed. Maggie and I, who are retiring, accept your appreciation for our work. For you who are continuing or returning, we hope that your time in office brings you a sense of accomplishment and fulfillment. May this year bless all of Westwood as we move forward together in shared ministry. Okay, now we are going to have a hymn, "The Spirit of Life," which will be on the screen. And we're going to sing it twice. Thanks. Okay.
These words are from the late Richard Wagamis. "From our very first breath, we are in relationship."
"With that indrawn draught of air, we become joined to everything that ever was, is, and ever will be."
"When we exhale, we forge that relationship by virtue of the act of living."
"Our breath commingles with all breath, and we are a part of everything. That's the simple face of things."
"We are born into a state of relationship, and our ceremonies and rituals are guides to lead us deeper into that relationship with all things."
"Big lessons? Relationships never end, they just change."
"In believing that lies the freedom to carry compassion, empathy, love, kindness, and respect into and through whatever changes. We are made more by that practice." Where have you been this summer? And what have you been doing that brought sustenance to your personhood? Here at Westwood, it is our practice to gather water from places we go and from our homes to pour into our communal bowl when we return to Westwood in the fall. Hence the name "water communion." Sometimes, we just pour the water into the communal bowl. Other times, we have a few things to say as well. And then there are the times when we've forgotten our water at home or even forgotten to collect it when we were away. For those times, we have emergency water in the little cups. Please help yourself. People on Zoom, if you type into the chat, Margaret can speak your words and add water on your behalf. I'll begin by pouring in the water that remains from our last water communion. You may add your water when you're ready. If you'd like to speak, come to the mic when you're done pouring. So I'll start us all off. This is water symbolically from Nordique, where we went, Richard and I, with some friends in July. And also water from the Okanagan, where my mom and my sister live, and we went to visit them in August. So this is all for good health.
This is water that is emblematic of the importance of water for the world, for our plants, for our life. I noticed the water barrels outside have new, a little facade in front of it. Lindsay, I'm so sorry I didn't follow through. I had promised on helping build the screen. I'm not sure why I'm all choked up, but sometimes I have to learn to say no. Yesterday, I took a friend's load to the dump, and there was a free Big Bin event. And I said I was going to be in line for a while because there was always a big lineup. And my friend gave me a book, and it was called "The Web of Life" to read while I was in line. And it talks about water. I'm sorry. And it's all about the interconnected web of life. And I'm so glad to be part of this community.
I'm Ada. I forgot to collect water, but so got water. I got water from my tap. And we are so fortunate to have city water?
Sasquatch.
Sasquatch water. Yeah. We're so fortunate to have water that we can drink, unlike some native communities in our wonderful country. And this water makes me think of Coyote Lake. I didn't do much traveling this summer. I went out to Coyote Lake, and I highly recommend that. It's a nature conservancy. It's about an hour's drive from here. And it's a very nice place. And originally, I think I may have got this, oh, from Japan. I don't know. Anyway, I mean, not the water, but the container. All right.
I'm Lindsay, and I have, along with the water, I want to mention the people that have been on the board and are on the board. They're not just on the board. They all have so much other things that they're doing with this church, for this church, and including doing a whole bunch of services this last year. And I've always appreciated all of them. That's that thing. Anyway, this water is symbolic of the rain barrel water and the tap water that we had to use quite a bit this summer because of the heat and the drought. And I have been, despite encouragement from Lorian and other people, I haven't done the garden blog this year. I just had so many other things happening that I just couldn't get myself to sit down and do it. But I'm going to do a big one. This week, I promise. But I put just, there's only native plants, except for the raspberries, in our gardens now, in the flower gardens. And I applied to the Canadian Wildlife Federation for our garden to be considered wildlife-friendly habitat. And we won, we got it. So we have a certificate that we have a wildlife-friendly habitat. And I'll put this up on the bulletin board, I guess. And there's one out on the shed as well. And I wanted to thank everybody who's helped support me and complimented me on the garden. I know it doesn't look nearly as nice as it did before the native plants. but I think it will in the end. And I think the only way to go anymore is with native plants. Otherwise, the pollinators are going to be gone, and then the food's going to be gone, and we're going to be gone.
So this is coming from Bill Lee, who's on Zoom. And I'm going to pour some water into the bowl that represents water from the pool that he swam in, I think every week during this past summer, from the William Lutske Pool here in Edmonton.
I had the journey of a lifetime this summer. Well, it started in the spring, in June. We went to Yukon, Miguel and I. We took our dog. And I've always wanted to go there. And finally, we got there. The Yukon River is immense, amazing. In parts, it is wide enough to be a lake, and it gets called Lake La Barge. Anybody who knows Robert Service knows about Lake La Barge. Yes, yeah, La Berge, yes. And I spent my birthday on the marge of Lake La Barge, which is actually La Berge. Yes, it's with an E, not an A, as Robert decided to do it. Well, yeah, exactly. I was also fortunate enough to go to Meati Crossing, finally, which is on our North Saskatchewan River. And I also made it down to Mikalon Lake to visit friends there. So there's a lot of symbolic water in this little cup. Interesting how many of us rely on our emergency water to get this ceremony done, but always worth it.
We're supposed to gather water from where we were in the summer, so my water is from Edmonton. Because I've been around Edmonton all summer, and I've had a wonderful summer and deliberately taken a little bit of space from church. It's my little sabbatical that makes it just so much nicer when I come back again and see all you faces and just get back into things. I just love that feeling. That little refreshing break is really important. So that's my water. I'm going to Montreal, though, in September for a couple of weeks, Montreal and Quebec City and eastern townships. The trip I tried last year, and then I got COVID and had to come home. So you don't give up, you do it again. So wish me luck.
Hi, everyone. My name is David Deep House. I've done water communion here from 2002 to 2018. That's a privilege and an honor to be back among friends and older, older and newer friends. And this summer, this water is from Manitou Sakahikan. I swam in both Manitou Sakahikan and Nakoman Sakahikan in Saskatchewan. These are the sacred salt lakes. And I also, last year before, swam in the other Manitou Sakahikan, also known as Little Manitou Lake near Watrous. I also swam in Missinippi, Otter Lake on the Churchill Flowage. And was there another place? There probably was another place, but I've kind of forgotten about it. Oh, the first two are Big Manitou Lake, just south of Marston, near Lloyd, and the other one is Redberry Lake in Saskatchewan. And so, and I went canoeing with my daughter Lucy and my daughter Abigail, for all those people who are curious about them. And I can tell you more about the water of the previous six years some other time, especially with Susan.
Okay, we have someone else here from Zoom. So this comes from Jen. And I'm going to read it off because it's kind of lengthy. Well, not that long, but she wrote, "I was glad to be able to spend a good portion of the summer with family, though the circumstances were sad. Please consider this water to be from the Quinell River, which my parents and sister live near, and Shorn Cliff Lake."
Good morning, everyone. My name is Shina Srida. And this summer, I was able to go to Vernon. So this will be symbolic of the several lakes that surround that beautiful community. And Dean and I also went up to Grand Prairie for the Bear Creek Folk Festival. And so this water is symbolic of the Muscosipi, a creek that runs along the side of the site. Dean and I also bought kayaks this summer, which everyone said, "Don't do it. You're not going to use the kayaks as nearly as often as you think you will." But we made it out twice. We went along the Sturgeon River, which is in St. Albert, and also out to the beautiful Star Lake. And here's hoping that next year we get to explore a few more places together.
All right, so this is on behalf of Jen? Right, okay. No, this is not Pepsi. It's a reuse can. So most of my time this summer was spent at home, but also out at Mikalon Lake. So, but this is from, we have a little pond in our backyard, and it's filled with rainwater. So I brought some of it along to share with the communal bowl.
My name is Leigh Born, and this water represents, I went to Sylvan Lake. That was my one chance to get out of the city because I spent most of my summer, as you all remember last spring, packing, unpacking, putting things away. So I moved. I left the land of Riverdale, which I had lived in for 24 years in the same building. I had been in Riverdale 25 years, which is the length of time that I had left Winnipeg to come to Edmonton. So I'm no longer in Riverdale. So this represents water from all the frequent dishes I had to do because you had to wash all everything back up and put everything back in the cupboard. So now I am in the land of Holyrood, which is just near Bonnie Dune, if you don't know Holyrood. And so I'm settling in. I've been there since mid-July. And yeah, so that's what this water represents.
While Jackie was talking, I mentioned Sask Water. There's an ad on TV now by Citi, I guess, promoting their water treatment. And they're calling the city water Sask Water. And it's a compliment, actually, to their really good job that they do of processing the city water. So that, I live out in Stony Plain, and I opened, or Spruce Grove, rather. I open a tap, and I get Sask Water. It's perfectly beautiful to drink. In fact, we had a, one of Darlene's daughters stay with us for a while this summer. And they actually packed probably two four-gallon jugs of Sask Water to take back to them to Regina because the water quality here is so good. Having said that, my summer has been spent recovering, and I missed... Talked to Lorian. Lorian has visited me in the hospital a couple of times. And I'm still recovering from July 1, 2023, when I was in the hospital, near death, and taking off life support and recovered. My body has recovered. I'm not sure about the brain, though, but I'm here, and we're celebrating that. Darlene and I, as far as we got, was to Wabhaman Lake, one beautiful hot day in July, I think it was. And Darlene, being blind, was struggling on the beach in the sand. But we got there and sat on the sand. I couldn't get to the beach to collect water. I thought about it, but I didn't want to leave her alone. And I was struggling on the sand myself. But yeah, we had a wonderful summer, just hanging around at Spruce Grove, walking in the park, in the trail and such. So yeah, that's Sask Water and summer.
Hi, I'm Dean. This water is symbolic of, I think it's McLeod Lake at Carson Pegasus Park near White Court, where we went camping early in the summer. And also from Bear Creek in Grand Prairie, where we went to the Bear Creek Folk Fest. And I've been inspired to learn the violin. So I'm just about a week into it now, so.
Hi, I'm Susan. I'm so happy to be here. I love this service. And yeah, before I pour my water and say what it symbolizes, I'd like to finish off what I was saying last year. I brought some water, some actual water, from my teenage childhood home. The house that my, the only house my parents ever bought. And it had a well, and the water was so delicious. So I brought a jug of it back and poured a small amount in there. But anyway, I recall that I had said that it was a very big summer for us because my father decided to sell that home and move out here with us. And during that water ceremony, I think I had said that we moved him out to his cabin in the woods. Because afterwards, somebody said to me, "Well, is he still there?" No, we did move to the cabin in the woods, a small cabin that my parents bought 40 years ago when the land was still cheap. And anyway, it's been a very special spot for us. And it's part of, we did move there for a month, and then he moved back here. And we've had a very successful year with him. He's much, I've found out that, it's been very interesting getting to know him on a deeper level. And I've learned that he's much smarter and much easier to get along with than what I remember him being when I was 17. And I hope that he has found something the same with me because I wasn't my easiest when I was 17. But anyway, yeah. So this water is representative of the water systems of the Penawobecong area, also known as the Blind River area, on the north shore of Lake Huron, just north of Manitouland Island, if you can picture that from your map days. And it's just a wonderful water system of very beautiful, clean water. And I got to go swimming almost every day and spend time with family and friends on different bodies of water in the area. And yeah, one weekend, we went to a powwow of the local native folks on the edge of the Blind River. And it was just beautiful. And yeah, another time, I got to go with my two high school girlfriends, who are, who had a big part in getting me to come out to Edmonton. And yeah, we went for some boat rides on some of the bigger lakes. And so it was a pretty blessed summer. And my father flew to Toronto to visit some of his favorite relatives in the city and then joined us at the cottage and drove all the way back out here. So that was pretty amazing because he's 95 years old now. So anyway, he tells me he's not going to do it again next year. But anyway, we'll see, anyway.
Hi, I'm Brenda. Yeah, we did a lot of water early. We did the Vancouver trip to Alaska, which was really beautiful. And yeah, lots of water with that. We also, during the trip, my cousin and his wife got married. One's Mormon and one is Catholic. So it's kind of an interesting combination. And also, on the trip, we had our 25th anniversary as well. And the water that I have is just from our birdbath.
Three bits of water. First is thanks for the rain early in the spring, which put about two gallons' worth of raspberries in my freezer. So I'm very thankful for the, thankful for the rain that happened early in the spring. Some thanks for friends and family who helped and invested a bunch of sweat. And there was tears and a little bit of blood renovating my front yard, renewing my front yard, making it much more friendly. Got rid of all the grass and put in lots and lots of lovely plants, that kind of stuff. So some thanks for that water. And also, I made a trip to the Yukon, place I've always wanted to be. Flew into Whitehorse, just spent a weekend there. It was a quick little trip, but one of the first things I did was put my hand in the Yukon River, which is, I don't know, for some reason, means a lot to me. So I forgot to bring any water back, but this is representative of that and a lovely trip and visit, yeah.
I went to the hospital this summer. This, I couldn't go over there and get some water, so I'm just using yours. But first, they thought I had a mini-stroke. And anyways, so I'm going to their stroke prevention unit and taking a little bit of medication. Then they think now I just hurt my arm badly, so they're doing some tests and stuff, which is kind of devastating because I play and I love to play. But big thanks to Margaret and to Brenda and to Rebecca because they were really, really supportive to me and always have been. And the other place I was thinking of, you know, I watch a lot of movies, and so I've been to all kinds of places. I was at Paris at the Olympics. And where else? Oh, I saw two movies. It was really good about the prejudice that Jesse Owens and Jackie Robinson both experienced. And oh my goodness, I just, it was incredible that, you know, how well they did despite the odds. And I really liked the one part where the manager hired Jackie Robinson. And so some of the places didn't want Jackie to come with the team. They'd say, "We want your team to come, but not Jackie." And the manager would tell them, "Well, you know what? I'm bringing him anyway because he's the reason we're winning. And like, maybe you should think about it because maybe when you're on your deathbed, they'll decide that you haven't done enough good." So there. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wants to contribute water?
I didn't travel very, very far this summer, but I did get to Canmore twice. I once was at Ulrich Family Reunion, where some of my nieces and nephews from the States came up. And that was great, that my children and grandchildren here in Edmonton were able to meet some of their relatives from the States. But I was in Canmore twice biking. And once in, during the summer, I was able to bike from La Combe to Red Deer, round trip with my biking group. So most of my travels were here in Alberta. But what I, where most of my actual traveling was on my bike. I think my odometer says that I did about 1,200 kilometers this summer. So, and we have such beautiful trails here in Edmonton. It's really, really wonderful. So, and anyway, the biking is great for me. I'm able to bike much better than I am with walking, so that's a bonus for me.
So imagine, if you will, that all our sustaining waters are blended together in this bowl, whether spoken aloud, typed in the chat, or held in our hearts, no matter. It is the water we drink to stay alive, the water that feeds our food and our planet, the water we swim in or rest beside. Whatever image you hold, imagine for a moment the essence of all these beautiful images gathered here in this one place. Please raise your arm in a gesture of blessing, palm up, and join me as we bless these communal waters. The blessing is on the screen. All water is holy water, from the sky or from the sea. It is not holy because we pray over it. It is not holy because we gather it in a church. It is holy because it is the stuff of life, returning and cycling through the plants and animals, oceans and streams, cells and seeds, again and again and again. May it be so. We will take this water, sterilize it, and save it. Then we can use it during the coming year for any special ceremony that we have. Please join us in singing the final hymn, "Blue Boat Home." The lyrics will be on the screen.
These are words from Starhawk. "We are all longing to come home to someplace, half-remembered and half-envisioned, one we may only catch glimpses of from time to time. Community, somewhere. Somewhere there are people to whom we can speak with passion without having the words catch in our throats. Somewhere, a circle of hands will open to receive us. Eyes will light up as we enter. Voices will celebrate with us whenever we come into our power. Community means strength that joins our strength to do the work that needs to be done, arms to hold us when we falter. A circle of healing, a circle of friends. Someplace where we can be free. Our blue boat home."
We extinguish this flame, but not the light of truth, the warmth of community, or the fire of commitment. These we carry in our hearts until we are together again.